Thank you, everybody, for making the time again, and we are recording, so I will call the meeting to order at 11:02. And we are here for a special meeting of the ARPA task force. We have some pending applications to consider, as well as discussion of hiring a consultant and the purposes for which I will get to in a few moments. But first, we do have public comments, so we'll open it up at this time to any members of the public wishing to speak and address the committee, although it looks like we've got mostly just members of the task force on for the moment. So any members of the public wishing to speak may do so at this time. All right, hearing none and seeing no hands raised, we will close public comment and move on to approval of minutes. We have minutes for the June 8, 2022, regular meeting that hopefully everybody has received. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Anderson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business, and we will start first with a discussion of retention of a consultant, and then we will move on to consideration of five pending applications which have been reviewed by the subcommittee for making recommendations. So let me first start, and then I can turn it over to Brig for anything additional on the consultant front. And what we're hoping to talk about is the hiring of a consultant by the city to help with compliance and reporting purposes for the administration of our ARPA dollars. And what that will mean is somebody who will be able to help my office, as well as Brig's office, Bobby's office, and the finance department, Diana and Carl's department, on ensuring correct reporting of all of the materials that we will need to be reporting back to the federal government as it relates to the spending of this money, as well as making sure, double checking our work as a task force and as a city to make sure that every dollar that gets spent out of our allocation is matched to an ARPA appropriate project. In other words, basically ensuring, giving us the stamp of approval that the projects that we are choosing to fund based on our understanding of Congress's guidelines are in fact the recommended, in the recommended areas. And this is something that we had initially, I was initially reluctant to bring in a consultant to help us direct our spending priorities, and I'm glad that we took the approach that we've taken. And if folks haven't seen, there was a great article in the Connecticut Examiner that many people have been calling me about, that spotlights some of the, really the 545 Main Street and the Dominic D. Martino LLC project in the downtown as innovative and really creative uses of the ARPA dollar. So I think that our process for selecting projects and for determining priorities has been a good one, and I'm glad that it's coming from the city and it's coming from the community rather than from an outside consultant who's sort of just trying to break what would be easiest and most in line with what Congress is attending. I think that we have taken a little bit of a more challenging path to get to the same, you know, to really better answers to that question that are very much in line with what Congress wants to see us doing. With all that being said, there are a number of municipalities that both who did bring in consultants earlier and who didn't bring on consultants earlier, who are now moving in that direction as it relates to compliance and reporting. And really, the reason for that, I think, boils down to, this is the first time in a generation that cities and towns and really even states have been tasked with this much federal discretionary money to spend and to allocate to projects. And that is going to mean a once in a generation effort to make sure that that money gets spent responsibly and gets reported responsibly, because as we have seen already, in our state and around the country, there is going to be very, very close scrutiny on these projects to make sure that they are in line with what taxpayers are signed up for. And the hope there then is to bring somebody on who can help with that process and who will, and that person will be, or that firm really, will be a firm that is also working with other municipalities around the state, most likely somebody who does this professionally and is able to, you know, bring some of the third-party expertise and the third-party pair of eyes to our reporting and making sure that we are doing everything that we need to be doing. The intention is, or the hope would be to go out to it for a competitive process, and basically, let's set proposals from accounting firms and from other professionals who are delivering this type of service and to find the right fit for the city. And just want to, you know, open it up for discussion of the merits of that. But those are sort of, that's sort of the reason that we came to this, on the administration side, the reason we want to talk about it. Brig, I'm going to ask if there's anything you want to add that I might have missed for the reasoning and the process here, and then we can open up for discussion. So over you.
I think you nailed it. The only thing that I would add, and it's a professional occupational hazard I do have to add, is to talk about liability as a lawyer. So one of the other reasons, again, is you want someone that has an errors and omissions policy that's going to be on the hook contractually for representing the city. Keep in mind that the liability flows to the city regardless of what happens. If a sub-grantee goes crazy, the city is ultimately on the hook for that. So I'd like to have, just to protect the city, another layer of insulation. And also, just to double check my math, I've given you my opinion on eligibility for these various projects, but again, that's just my opinion. The opinion that matters ultimately will be the feds, and it would be good, again, to have some professional cover, just to make sure that we're all in accord. And if we're not, and an audit does occur, then we have someone that's there as well. And then just finally, and Carl and Diana probably could speak to this too, but the issue of person power. I mean, there's just a substantial amount of work now because we're spending a lot of ARPA funding on grantee and sub-grantee agreements as opposed to direct government spending. So it is a lot more grant administration and contract administration than I think any of us anticipated. That's my speech. Thanks.
Carl and Diana, do you want to add anything to that? All right, Bree, go ahead.
Has there been any research on the anticipated cost of hiring this consultant over the term of the ARPA program?
Good question. Can you speak to that, Brig?
Sure. No, there's been no research. This is the preliminary. This is the first step, really, to talk about it as a task force. I have put out feelers to my colleagues, and it's the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys, and several towns have retained consultants. I've not gotten into the details, but it's the kind of thing that we, as a task force, if we do want to go in this direction, and I'd recommend that we do, that's exactly the kind of thing that we would have to start investigating.
Hi, sorry, my phone dropped. So yes, do we just, you know, the boatload of work that comes with this, not just the work, but to make sure everything is being handled in accordance with federal, state, and local regulations. To do this job right, you really have to have undivided attention, and we don't have the manpower to do that, plus the normal course of action. And I have reached out, as I'm sure Brig and the mayor have, to our counterparts across the state of Connecticut for the finance offices and most of the larger communities that have sizable allocations, like Middletown, are looking for outside consultants that will be managing the process, because these recipients are not familiar, most are not familiar with the guidelines that they have to follow. And so it becomes very cumbersome for them and for us. So the consultant is a necessary beneficial help that'll help us get through this accurately as possible.
I guess, if I could also...
I think, sorry, I think that Bree still wanted to...
Okay.
But thank you very much, Diana. Go ahead, Bree.
Yeah, I guess, so one of my concerns would be, given that the ARPA funds have a lifetime of more than just a few months, that we're going to have to supervise with a consultant, and that we have a number of projects that we want to approve and move forward to the council, I don't think it is appropriate for the city to use taxpayer funds to pay for a consultant to administer this. If it's acceptable with the ARPA funds, that's great. But at the same time, we're at a point where we're trying to spend our ARPA funds down, and we're about to vote on some of the last applications. So not having a sense of how much money we have to put aside, especially with Diana's comments, I'm assuming that most of these consultants are going to charge hourly rates, not a flat service fee. And if we have a number of organizations who are described as incapable or inexperienced in administering funds like this, I imagine that our consultants that we hire and pay for are going to spend an enormous amount of hours assisting the grantees, which means that the cost of the consultants could be significant compared to some of these projects. So I'm unsure about how we can approve the remaining projects, not knowing the pool of money we need to set aside for the consultants. And those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that that's worth discussion. And I think that figuring a number, a budget for that, Brig put in the chat that it is an expense that we can use for, that we can use ARPA funds for, but yeah, knowing what that number is and determining that number, I think, is a good step. So Gene, I know that you had a question, and Reverend Harville, I saw your hand as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm thrilled that we're moving in this direction. I brought it up at the budget workshops a while ago with our department heads. This was back in April, that, you know, I anticipated that to do this right, we needed to hire a consultant to dot the i's and cross the t's. It's extremely important that we don't get caught with not having the manpower to handle this properly. And I think it's within the guidelines of the grant to access a consultant, to, as many communities are already doing, because they realize this is tremendous opportunity for so many in the community, but it's also a burden that has to be handled properly, bureaucratically. So I, you know, as far as the cost, you know, that may be a little difficult to anticipate, because you're not going to know exactly how many hours. We could perhaps agree to not to exceed a mile and come back when we have exceeded the hours that we expect a consultant would be working to assist us. But I'm thrilled. It's smart business to have someone outside of the city involved in this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. Reverend Harville, if you want to...
My question and concern was, do you have a range of the amount that you expend for this service? And when would you bring them on? And they would not be involved in the selection process. It's after the process?
So that's, so starting backwards, yes, no, they would not be involved in the selection process. It certainly could weigh, certainly would weigh in on whether our selections were in compliance with the recommendations or with the guidelines, with the regulations, and also could help with recommendations around, you know, how things can be broken down and disseminated, although I think we've already done most of the legwork on that front. But yeah, we would continue the selection process as we've been administering it. And then I would, you know, I see Joe Fazino's hand up as well, but, you know, Brig, I'm sorry to keep coming back to you, but do you have any sense of what that range would be from any initial research? And I think that the timeframe would be, we would come back to this group with some next steps after this discussion at our next meeting, for, you know, recommendation one way or the other. And then would look to, if the recommendation was to proceed, we would look to put out the RFP as soon as possible to get people, to get people applying. So Brig, do you have a ballpark for number, either hours or rates?
I don't, but I have a sense of the folks that are doing this for a living, and there's a range of small firms that specialize this, all the way up to, you know, large accounting firms, including, I think, the one that already does auditing for the city itself. So there's a range, at least in the small sample that I've seen of folks who do this. And you could, in an RFP, and I would recommend that you get out quickly and come back quickly, it won't take that long, that you ask for hourly versus flat fee, that you ask for costs not to exceed, that you ask sort of the market to tell you what the market is. Because honestly, it is a new market, and I don't know, I'm not sure any of us really know what that market looks like or should look like yet. So I would have the market sort of tell us.
So that's something we can bring back after doing a little bit more research. But I think that what Councilman NoSara suggests, and I think that the point Bree makes is very well taken, that we should know what we're getting into before we start assigning the rest of the funding that we have to assign. So between that and determining sort of not to exceed number that we can at least start from, I think that's some homework that we can work on. But Joe, as you know, let's go over to you. Let's go to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is more for Diana and Carl. When we do CSO projects and we have bonding, they always have a line item for legal services, legal fees, as a percentage of the bonding that we have. I was wondering if they would consider doing that similar to what we do for CSO for this funding. They should have a line item for legal fees and take out whether it's 10% or whatever it is that they normally use to cover these costs.
Well, initially, my take on that is our legal issues, at least initially, will be our city attorney's office. The line item we designate for bond ordinances is for bonding fees and the legal fees that we potentially could encounter, but predominantly, it's for the cost to borrow the money, and in some cases, to finance the bonds. If we do notes that will eventually turn into bonds, and we have to pay interest on those notes. So that's the charge really for that line predominantly. So in this situation, our, you know, I would imagine our legal department would be the first point of contact for any legal matters, and then if that needed to be expanded, you know, then that would be a further discussion. I don't know if we plan to allocate 100% of these dollars from the get-go. So I would imagine there may be some residual money that remains that could, you know, possibly cover anything that we would need, that our legal office wouldn't handle.
And just to add to Diana's statement, we know those costs going in, we know what the consultants are going to be. So when we take the full amount of the bonds, we divide it up, you know, by the total, you know, water and sewers portion of it over the total, and you get the percentage of the cost. We don't know what those costs will be right now, so it's kind of hard to estimate those.
Thank you. That's, hopefully that was helpful. And yeah, we will finance myself, Brig, we'll talk and do some research on where this should fit in, what the ballpark should look like, and be back with the larger group of that. Yes, Brig.
I apologize for just parachuting in, but a motion might be in order authorizing me to proceed with preparing an RFP and sending it out and then reporting back to the working group, because I think time is sort of of the essence.
Okay.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on that? And that will just allow us to keep the wheels turning here. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, thank you. Matter passes unanimously, and thank you, Brig. And we will zero in on the funding ballpark as well and then report back to the group on that. All right, thank you for the discussion and action, everybody, and we'll keep it moving here and discuss our pending applications. So we've got five to talk about today, and we can just go in order, starting with the Cross Street Training and Academic Center. And Brig, will you be sort of taking point for the working group on these?
I can, although Gene and Cynthia have been involved as well. But I would take the opportunity, maybe, Mayor, to go back to 4B to talk about the working group membership itself.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I mean, if you'd like, I'll queue that up as well. So we were down a member because Christina's ability to serve on the working group was substantially limited by her new position. So she could still serve in the task force, and you can see here, she's here with us today. But we're down a person, and the working group talked and thought it'd be a good idea to get somebody else in, suggested Pamela, and Pamela regrettably agreed to do so. So if the working group, if the task force as a whole is okay with Pamela joining, a motion would probably be in order there, putting her on our, again, not under FOIA, subcommittee, but just our working group to talk through these applications and report back to the whole group.
So move.
Thank you, Gene. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Pam, for your continued efforts. We really appreciate it. All right, well, whoever would like to sort of speak on behalf of the working group. Gene, if you want to take the lead, or Bobby, I'm happy to turn it over to you for just presentation on the recommendations here.
Well, our chair did an excellent job with all the, managing all the data. So I think we could just go through them, Brig, one at a time, just as a summary. Is that possible?
It is. All right, so we're starting with Cross Street Training and Academic Center. And you should have your packets. I sent out an updated packet yesterday, early afternoon. So if you have that, please pull that up. And then the Cross Street Training and Academic Center would be the first application in your packet. So just refresh your recollection, this would be a three-pronged approach to addressing the effects of the pandemic, especially on members of the BIPOC community. So three elements would be community health workers, the emergency relief fund for church community members, and a grant program, certainly would be a grant program for actual individual economic assistance. The working group looked at the program as a whole, thought it was phenomenal and had good recommendations, but had some issues with the direct assistance on the grant income program. Now, the grant income program would help fund 25 BIPOC or Latino, Latina, Latinx families per year for a total of 63 such individuals. And while the working group liked the idea, I think they were concerned about its administration, its accountability, and just, you know, all the obvious potential issues with trying to administer something like that. So that said, the working group came up with the following. And if you don't mind, I'm going to try to share my screen, which is always a bit of an adventure, so that you can see our rubric. All right, I hope that you can see the screen, and we're looking right now at the Cross Street Training and Academic Center. The ask was for 1.22 million, and in the working group's estimation, here is sort of how things broke down. Let me pull up the categories again. Apologize. Oh, bless my heart, as they would say down south. It's even worse if folks tuned in previously...
If you highlight just I and N at the same time and then unhide, it will all unhide.
Thank you, Bree. It's, if you saw the council meeting last time, it's even worse watching me try to do math in front of a live television audience. So thanks for bearing with me. Okay, so here we are. So Cross Street, 1.22 million, working group looked at it and thought the number of people impacted was substantial. So out of 10, they assigned that an eight. The urgency of the project, they thought the project was in fact quite urgent, put a nine. Readyness to proceed, it seemed quite ready, they put that at an eight. Budget and funding, in other words, the ability of the project to move forward with and without the city's help and ARPA funds, they put as a nine. And the agency and project feasibility, in other words, can this thing go, they put as a nine as well. Now, that said, the concerns remain with the individual funding. And so of the budget submitted by the Cross Street group, the Cross Street Training group, they suggested that $600,000 of that be removed. That's the component that would apply to individual funding. So the recommendation from the working group was for $620,809.
All right, thank you, Brig. So that is the recommendation. Is there any discussion on that? I think it makes sense to entertain these as individual projects and not try to do a motion for all of them. So Bobby, I see your hand up. And I'll have to navigate the screen here a little bit, so bear with me if I miss you. Okay, Bobby's got some audio problems, so maybe we'll come back. Did I hear Gene?
No, I think Brig summarized it real well. The subcommittee, working committee was very excited about this. The question about administering funds to individuals remains unclear. Perhaps the consultant can, you know, if we wanted to revisit that later on and look into that in a federal sense. But we do want to get this, the city obviously wants to endorse this as presented, and feels it's extremely important to, for the full committee to endorse.
All right, thanks. Bree?
I just want to understand the committee's recommendation and confirm that the change in funding is only to affect the grant income program?
Right.
And that we are not changing the emergency relief fund program that was also part of the proposal?
That's the way I envision it. Bobby, is your mic working?
I saw it as well. This is Cynthia.
Yes, Cynthia, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bree, go ahead.
No, I was just thanking you all for the clarification.
Great. And Bobby just wrote in the chat, I wanted to chime in and say the concern is not with the agency, it was with the documentation reporting for direct donations, very much in favor of the, the committee was very much in favor of the projects.
Correct.
All right, and that will need to be a discussion, and we'll, Brig and Bobby, work on that. Well, that will need to be a discussion with the agency as well, should this move forward. But any further, Reverend Harville?
No, would you allow Robin to speak to your concerns? Because this is existing now, what she mentioned in this program. If you allow her to speak to the concerns that you may have.
That would be great, actually, since we've got folks here. So Reverend Anderson, we'll give the floor to you.
Okay, yes. So I just want to make sure that I understand what the question is around administering. Okay, yes. Um, so I just want to make sure that I understand uh, what the question is around administering. Because um, again, we already do this. Um, we have, uh, as I mentioned to you before, even with the uh, church relief funds, we've done those before. And then we've also um, have uh, projects in which we do assist people uh, currently now uh, with their um, uh, you know, rent and the utilities and um, financial assistance. Um, and we've been able to, uh, we have a project, a program in terms of how we distribute uh, those funds. And then also how we um, you know, track those funds as well as uh, working with the, you know, families around assisting them with financial recovery. And I guess my concern would be, and I thank you so much for your comments about, it's a great program. But as we look at the ARPA funds and really look at recovery, especially as it relates to uh, you know, um, post uh, pan, as we move into hopefully one day post pandemic, but also just looking at where we are, you know, economically. Um, you know, it's one thing to um, help families uh, with food and, and all of those kinds of things. But you know, what would also be uh, great and, and, and the fact that they're in a poverty situation is to help them get out of those poverty situations. And you know, that's what's going to make people feel good about themselves. And that's what ultimately will help to um, also um, assist the city in terms of not being able, in other projects, in terms of not being able to do that. Most people want to be able to take care of themselves and want to be able to take care of their families. They just don't have anyone to help them to kind of manage those funds so that they can get themselves in a position financially in which they could move forward. I really thought that this is kind of what the uh, the ARPA funds are somewhat for. And so as we really talk about recovery and I understand, um, which I think we have some great projects that are actually going on, you know, also, but what is going to really lift people up and move them out of where they are right now in the financial um, you know, stance, uh, state that they're in, especially due to, they were already in that state and then even more so due to the pandemic. So again, in terms of administrating this, uh, we've, we do this, we've been doing this for uh, for many years. Uh, we, you know, so that's not really an issue. So I'm not sure what kinds of answers that you wanted, you know, from that. And what do you mean by that? I guess that I would have to know a little bit more about what you mean by administering it.
Great. Uh, thank you, thank you for that, Reverend Anderson, and maybe there are folks here who can um, you know, G, Gene or Bobby or Cynthia, if you want to chime in. I think that part of it may be um, the, even if it's being administered now, it's the, the, the question of whether um, because it's the, because it would be now, now federal dollars that we're reporting back on. Although I don't, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Reverend Anderson, about um, about this being in line with the intent, so.
Yeah, well, let me just say this also, that uh, we do, we have and we do have federal grants. So in terms of being able to administer federal grants, that's not an issue. I just want to make sure that we're clear about that, too. And again, uh, we've done a lot of work around vaccine, but also we, we see, you know, we have grants through the Office of Minority Health. That's part of our Dula project. Uh, we have uh, grants through um, FEMA. We've had grants through FEMA, so that's not, and, and you know, so I just want to make sure we're, I'm, I'm clear and also Samsa. So I want to make sure that we're clear that the um, that we have had federal grants, we have federal grants, and we're certainly able to manage those federal grants.
Great. Um, thank you. Alright, Gene, did you, were you gonna jump in there?
The question raised was, yeah, um, grant refunding um, is a gray area that we need clarification from, from ARPA. Is that within the guidelines?
I'm sorry, what was that, what was the question one more time?
Uh, grant refunding. So we have a, we have a grant and uh, distributing those funds to individuals is the question that uh, we uh, wanted clarification on. That's why we, we went with three hundred thousand plus for first year, three hundred thousand plus for the second year.
Well, let me ask this question also. In terms of the construction projects that you have, and they will have many different subcontractors, how does that work versus this, this project? Because that's still a subcontractor that you, many different subcontractors that you'll be paying from the funds that you actually initially give to, uh, say, Dominique.
Well, the infrastructure may, may, uh, you know, it's, it's uh, different in, in the sense that it involves um, contracts with uh, individuals uh, who are, who are applying for the work uh, to be accomplished. This is just the area that we want, we wanted clarification on before we said, uh, we can, we can actually use the funds in this way.
Then this is, um, and, and just from the chat, Bobby is uh, writing, I am in to, I'm in total agreement that direct donation is an important piece. The concern was not the ability to administer the funding. Uh, it was a request, a question of reporting and tracking donations given directly to a participant. Contractors will have bills, statements, and other trackable um, outcomes. So um, what might make sense is uh, either for the committee to uh, to, we can, we can take action on this recommendation here by the working group for, at the funding level um, that was, was recommended and then continue to, I, I think, I think that there is definitely a, a longer offline conversation that's warranted here with Cross Street applicants um, and with um, with the legal and, and, and finance team uh, around this. So we can either, we can either take action on what's been recommended or we can uh, defer action on the application until uh, we, we, we drill down a little bit more on uh, on how, what the, what the administration would look like. Um, because it sounds like that's where the discussion centered on with the, with the working group. And um, does that makes, does that make sense to, to folks? And would, would folks like to take action um, on this, on this partial amount? Uh, Reverend Harville, I see your hand up.
If you take action now, will you hold additional funds in case it get approved totally?
I think that what we should do is try to, eh, eh, continue in order as much as we, we have here um, and try to revisit this right at the next, at the next meeting. So um, at the next meeting that we would be taking up applications, we wouldn't want to, but I, in other words, I wouldn't want to bump this down um, the list in terms of the chronological order we've been doing these. So um, so yes, we, we, we would, we would, we would approach this in order so that there would uh, be funds fully expended before we get back to it.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we, we fund um, at the level suggested by the working group and, and look to clarify the questions on um, uh, private donations and whether the grant supports that, uh, the ARPA grant supports that process.
Stuck it in.
Okay, thank you. Who was the, who was the second?
Bree. Bree.
Bree, okay, thank you. Alright, any uh, discussion on that? And thank you for the discussion, um, everybody.
I'm just going to say I recuse myself from voting because of the application.
Okay. Same as me as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, seeing no other hands up as I scroll through here. Uh, all those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, abstaining, we have recusals from Reverend Anderson and Reverend Harville. Okay, um, and uh, we will be in touch uh, after this meeting. Um, and this is, I think, and it also emblematic of uh, some of the reasons why internally we have been discussing the need for uh, for professional uh, opinions of third party uh, on this. So uh, thank you, everybody, for the, for the dialogue. Um, and why don't we move on uh, to our next pending application, which is two oh six ink. Um, and uh, Gene or, or Brig, I'll hand it back over to you.
Well, I'd like to have Brig pull um, pull up the chart.
The numbers here, yep.
Yeah.
Hopefully you are seeing the spreadsheet.
Yep.
Okay, we're at number sixteen, two oh six ink. And Gene, uh, do you want to present or do you want me to?
Yeah, you go ahead, Brig.
Okay, sure. Alright, so this was a presentation from uh, David Roan and Christine Born uh, and their group. The proposal is to purchase and renovate a property to create a veterans campus, is for all veterans activities in the city. And they had in mind a headquarters for American Legion post two oh six, um, a veterans incubator program, a community cooling center, an after-school educational program for community youth, family crisis and reuniting services for veterans, counseling academy, and some other American Legion programs to benefit the city. Uh, they would also pose using the property as a banquet facility to generate income for growth and support. And so I'll walk you through what the working group uh, looked at. And I will say, just sort of as a threshold matter, there is a question as to whether and to what extent ARPA funds can be used for these purposes. So that I think was at the forefront of everybody's minds. But notwithstanding that, um, we went through and took a look at each of the factors. So for the number of people impacted, the working group felt it was somewhat limited in scope. They assigned a three. For the urgency of it, um, again, this is a project that has been uh, talked about for some years. They viewed it as not as urgent as some of the others, so they assigned a three to that as well. Readiness to proceed, um, it seems to rely substantially on city funding and does not have uh, as much progress as some of the others. In fact, it sort of seems very much in the infancy stages. So they assigned a one uh, to that. Same with respect to budget and funding, again, it's relying substantially, if not entirely, on city funding. And same with respect to feasibility, again, it's been a discussion, thought a good idea for many years, but has not moved beyond that. So all of that said, the committee recommended uh, not funding it uh, at all.
Okay, uh, thank you, Brig. Any uh, Gene or Cynthia or uh, others who were there for the discussion, if you want to add any, anything you want to add to that? And if not, we can um, entertain them.
No, I think Brig handled it very well. Thank you, Brig.
This may, may or, or may not be pertinent, but I think it's important information. It would be improper, I think, not to share this. Uh, but there was conversations uh, uh, at the council level, uh, this project um, uh, did receive council support in two, two thousand nineteen, I think it was. Maybe it was, maybe it was late, a little bit later than that, where the council appropriated two, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, if um, the applicant was able to secure state funding. Um, and that's, that piece is, is being reactivated. Um, I think you'll see it um, in the July uh, council, uh, supported by myself and, and Darnell Ford. Um, if uh, the applicant is able to receive uh, uh, state funding, then we would ask the council to, to consider um, reactivating that um, that appropriation that failed to be used because state funding was not attained. And uh, so it went back into the general fund. I hope I explained that um, carefully enough, Brig. But I think it's important to, to mention that.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, any uh, other questions or discussion on post two oh six, or excuse me, two oh six ink? Right, sorry, scrolling through my squares here. Um, is there a motion to um, uh, accept this recommendation for uh, not funding this project?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, all those in, uh, any discussion? Uh, alright, all those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Uh, alright, that pass, passes unanimously with um, one abstention from Reverend Harville.
I also abstain, sir.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Uh, two abstentions from um, Robin Anderson and Moses Harville. Okay, um, thank you, everybody, and with uh, and if there's nothing else, we'll move on to our next uh, agenda item with, which is JDS Holdings. Um, and I think we're, looks like Brig, back over to you for um, an overview on that, what the group discussed.
Film at eleven, back over to you. Um, so this is uh, the project John Decena presented, it would be a restaurant, um, an ice cream business in a lower-income community. He identifies forty percent low income in, in an adjacent apartment complex in total of forty-five point three-nine percent low income in the area. Um, he uh, indicated it would create fifty-five jobs, thirty of them would be full-time, and twenty-five would be part-time. The committee um, was supportive and walked through each of the factors, which I will happily do so with you. So with respect to the number of people affected, um, you know, it's potentially community-wide. It certainly affects the folks getting uh, direct employment, certainly affects the folks in the nearby community. So they've assigned a seven to that. Uh, for urgency, uh, I think given the uh, the sort of hole in South Main Street for a business like this, and again, given the community uh, nearby, it seemed like a fairly important thing to do fairly quickly. So, and obviously the project, uh, from his standpoint, when it proceeds, they put a seven there. Readiness to proceed, again, as I've just mentioned, he's basically ready, so uh, they assigned a nine to that. Budget and funding, again, fairly well lined up, uh, without respect to whether ARPA funding gets into place. And so they assigned an eight. And similarly, feasibility, uh, demonstrated the history of being in the community, contributing to the community, and uh, having businesses successfully run within the community. So they, with respect to feasibility, also assigned an eight. Recommendation was a uh, a somewhat reduced amount. So the application sought six hundred thousand dollars and the working group recommended four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Alright, thank you, Brig. Uh, Gene or Cynthia, anything to add?
No, I think this is one of the ones where we had used a formula with all of them and all of the developers thinking it through. And this was the, correct me if I'm wrong, Brig, we applied a percentage in terms of being fair across the board about reduction of the, of the ask.
So for clarification purposes on the chart, um, I'm trying to recall, there was many, many meetings. And of course, we, we did support uh, the initiative and the um, uh, connection to uh, our schools and um, the area really does need um, this facility. But it's still, eh, we didn't reduce this, it still had six hundred thousand. That was the initial ask and that's what we, we voted to approve. Correct?
No, my notes show four hundred and fifty, Gene.
Okay. So the chart doesn't show that, though. Um, well, I, I personally, I, I, you know, there were so many meetings. I, I try to stay internally consistent with these. Um, and um, that was a, it's a small ask. And um, being a bit, a chair of multiple building committees, today, what's happening out there is dreadful for these projects. It's just to keep pace with inflation every day is a people are falling through the roof here. So I would recommend that we, we go with the original small, you know, um, ask. I'd make that motion.
Okay, uh, alright, so there's a motion. It sounds like there might be a little bit of um, confusion among the, the working group, so. Is there a mo, so motion is, has been made um, for the, for the original amount. And okay, so Bobby is in, in the chat, we did increase the amount for um, DCF on the floor because of the increase in cost as well.
Yes, right.
Um, okay, and I will, I will, um, yeah, that, which is, you know, the, it's a valid motion. Um, I just will, uh, uh, advise about the additional projects that we, you know, that, these will be, there will be rising costs um, that we face with a number of these projects. But it's true that with, as it relates specifically to the developers, um, that is a, that is a concern. that is a, that is a concern. So don't want to editorialize too much, so, on the floor. Any, is there, is there a second for that motion? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm scrolling through the, through the squares here. Thank you, Bobby. All right, so any discussion on that? I see Bree's hand is up.
Yeah, I have one.
Oh, I'm, okay. Reverend Anderson, let's go to you first and then to Bree.
I guess my question is on, and probably not just this project, and that could be another meeting on any projects or the construction projects. When they say that they're going to hire people, what would, what, because that could be anybody, that could be people from out of state, that could be people from, from, from everywhere. And, you know, even as I look sometimes at the restaurants and stuff that we have downtown and different places, I don't really see a whole lot of, especially, I would say, people of color or low-income people. So how would that be guaranteed? And would they be guaranteed to be Middletown residents?
So was that part of the, I know that there's, there are certain hiring commitments that were part of the application. And I, I don't have that right in front of me, but somebody, Brig, can you, yeah, can you speak to that?
Again, so the application includes a checkbox for target groups, which includes who's participating, whether the Middletown residents. So this project checked that the project participants will consist of more than 51% of Middletown residents. Now, with respect to communities of color, I don't see anything here. It doesn't ask for that. And with respect to making sure that folks do what they're saying they're going to do, that'll be a part of the process with grant confirmation, the agreements, all the stuff that we've sort of been talking about getting consultants for, that you're going to do what you say you're going to do.
Right, and I think that since the, the reporting, the reporting back of both how the dollars are being spent in terms of where they're going, but also any, you know, those, the commitments that are made as part of the application. That's something that, again, that's, that's part of where I think the manpower concern comes from when we're working with outside groups. Yes, there are commitments that have clearly been made with a number of these projects in that area that will require oversight. So I think it's, I think it's an important question.
Thank you.
Brig, do you want to add anything, do you want to add to that?
I apologize, and I don't mean to take up so much time in the meeting, but there's a, we asked for a narrative description of beneficiaries by ethnic group, race, female-based households, if possible. Again, this is based on the CDVG guidelines, so that's the language. But the project indicates, again, low to moderate income households, youth from within the households, drive-through, so beneficial to folks with disabilities. But that's, that's the narrative response, the narrative ask, just to, to clarify. Apologies, thanks.
We'll go next to, next to Bree and then to Reverend Hubble.
So a question about the change in funding levels. I know in other circumstances, notably the second project we approved, that we dropped from 1.5 to 750,000. That was done after a conversation with the applicant about whether or not the reduction in fees or grant money would adversely affect the project. And I understand the reduction in the ministerial program today was done because there was an excise of a specific line of the program request. But in this case, I don't know how we're getting from 600,000 to 450,000. And I do not know if we, the working group, has had a discussion with the applicant to see if the project is feasible and viable at the reduced funding. Has a conversation to that effect taken place?
No.
Sounds like, okay, so I wasn't aware of one, and it sounds like the working group didn't. And Bobby's can, Bobby's going to be, it looks like, typing something. But, but yes, I think that, I, I believe that the, Cynthia had mentioned that the sort of a formula had been applied similar to the application to, I think that it, that was, it was the same formula that had been applied to the 545 application, which you, which you mentioned. And, and then to DCF as well and had the funding restored because it was unlike with DCF. The state, there was no, you know, equivalent state funding, or unlike with 4, 4, 545, I'm sorry, there's so many projects. There wasn't sort of an equivalent state funding match that, that came in. And Bobby did add in the chat, I spoke with John, I, he reached out with concern and rising costs since the application.
I, I will just state that I will support a motion to fully fund this at 600,000, but absent a conversation and commitment from the applicant that the reduced funding could successfully complete this project, I can't support reduced funding.
Okay, thank you. We'll go next to Reverend Hubble.
My question was answered, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Joe Fazino.
Thank you, ma'am. My question is, is that the calculation, the formula, could that be shared with the rest of us so that we know how these are rated? I mean, if it's like 75% of the ask, how did that formula work out?
Good question, and yes, we can share that. I think that that was sort of largely determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, but was determined kind of based on the evaluation of that first application from a developer that came in vis-à-vis what they would or might, would or might not, might or might not be getting for state funding and has been kind of replicated for, for other projects. But it sounds like that may be something that the task, we need to revisit as a, as a task force and working group. All right, any other questions or discussion on this application? Or motion, I should say. All right, so motion is, is on the floor for funding at the full amount. All those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? All right, thank you very much. Matter passes unanimously and we will update the numbers accordingly. So thank you, everybody. And, yes.
Excellent, general question.
Please.
Of the working group speaking to the applicants, if they have questions about that project, it just seem like that maybe happened, I'm not sure, are they talking to them? The working group, the applicants?
I know that, I know that that has, I'll, I'll let them speak to that, but I know that there have been conversations with applicants.
Yeah, Reverend, many times we relied on questions we had were handled through, to our attorney Brig Smith. And he would get back to us quickly, if not instantaneously, within the hour after we adjourned, you know, with questions we had. So there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of emails, I can't keep track of some days. But yes, there was opportunity for us to ask questions.
And my, my concern is that no one spoke to Reverend Robin Anderson about her project and the question they had in regards to it. And so that, that would be a, a concern as to who you're speaking to, the reason you're speaking to them, before you make a decision.
I, I understand your point. And again, it's something we needed clarification on. So we moved forward to fund it at, at a level we were pretty certain is going to be fine. And then we're going to look further into the question of donations.
And I think, I think it's important that that be, be a priority for us, so.
Yeah.
So we will, we will, we will make sure that that, that that conversation.
Yeah, that we get to, I get answers by our next meeting.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you for the question. And we'll continue on here with the second to last item, which is the application from the Middletown Fire Department for a new fire apparatus. So Brig, do you want to go through the categories and then we can open it up?
Sure. The ask from the Fire Department was for 1.2 million. And it would be what's called a quint fire apparatus, so it doubles as, I guess, a pumper and an aerial ladder. It is, I think, fairly self-explanatory, at least I hope it is, because I think I've now exhausted my knowledge of fire technology. But the committee was strongly in favor of this. So with respect to number of people impacted, it's the city, so that's 10. Urgency, you heard the phrase, where's the fire? Well, there's the fire. And especially as we talked about construction costs and supply chain issues, they thought this is important to get funded quickly. Readiness to proceed, they're ready, just needed the funding, additional funding. And budget and funding, again, they have other sources, they have, you know, general fund sources, fire sources. But this is a, a source that is eligible under ARPA and that the committee strongly favors. They gave an eight. And then feasibility, again, it's, it's the Fire Department, so they, they can and, and have done it. So they give that. But recommendation, just because of the limited amount of funding that we have and because of the availability of funding elsewhere for the Fire Department, they recommended a reduction in the funding. So instead of 1.2 million, they suggested 1 million.
All right, thank you very much. I will, I will just add, just as a point of fact to that, that I know that, that the department is, it does intend, we are intending to move forward with an, with an order on a new apparatus, just because he is there regardless of the, of the funding level. I know that we will save about $85,000 based on when the, when the date of the order is placed. So the chief was following up with me about, about timing for this. So that's part of, I think, the factor in the urgency is just the timing of when the order is placed. As Brig said, the supply chain issues are, of course, not a stranger to any of us. So with that, just little point of fact out there, I can open it up for any further comments or, or discussion. Anybody have anything to add or any questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion from the group for the recommended, recommended amount. Would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much, Pam and Cynthia. We'll move to a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All abstaining. All right, thank you very much, everybody. That was straightforward and we're appreciative of the support. And we'll go next to Nora Cupcake for purchase of the 696 700 Main Street Building. And one more time, Brig, back over to you.
Okay. So the Nora Cupcake application would look for $500,000 to rehabilitate and I guess make better for both the business and tenants the building that they're occupying right now. Give me a minute, my computer is disagreeing with me. I'm having, so working group friends, I'm having difficulty pulling up my application. If anybody has theirs available and can jump in and save someone from drowning, I would appreciate it.
I have mine, Brig. So for, for a number of people impacted, I have five. For urgency, we also said five. Readiness to proceed, eight. Budget and funding, nine, bless you. And project agency and feasibility, a 10. And our recommendation was for 500,000.
All right, thank you, Cynthia. As you can, as we can see, a little bit of a narrower audience here, but a project that is already, you know, far along with, with viable funding and plans in place. So any discussion on, on this? Or any questions for the working room? Right, is there a motion for the recommended amount to be approved?
So moved, Brig.
All right, thank you. I'll, thank you, Gene and Pam. Any discussion? During none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All abstaining. All right, thank you very much. We will move these forward, a few of them will, will head directly to council without delay. And others, we will follow up, well, they will all head forward without delay. But as, as it relates to the questions that were asked, we, we have some, some homework to do to report back by the next meeting. So I will let everybody know also that tomorrow evening, we do have a special common council meeting for the express purpose of approving and moving forward ARPA applications. These, if I'm not mistaken, Gene, these will not be on that agenda. They will be on a future agenda in the next few weeks, but tomorrow's council meeting.
On the agenda.
Oh, it is?
These are on the agenda.
These are on the agenda.
We were, we were holding up for this meeting to see what was going forward. And then we'll get the documentation, Your Honor, to, so that it's posted properly today.
Excellent.
Okay, you know, the council supports moving these along, even in, in cases where, where there may be some future funding down the road, which we need to remember that, to exhaust our, our funds because we may want to revisit some of these a bit way down the road. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, excellent. Well, it'll be a short turnaround then to getting these dollars out into the community and
Right.
Appreciate everybody's time through this process, a complicated one, but I think a fruitful one. And anything else for the good of the order? Bree?
I just wanted to say, I look I wanted to say, I look forward to the, I look forward to the questions that persons have that I may be able to answer. But I hope also that in the future, that we do the same for everyone, that if there are questions about an application, that we ask those questions before we get here. Thank you.
Yes, I, I think that will, I, full, full agreement. I think that that's going to be very important going forward, so thank you. Bree, go ahead.
Just administrative requests, could we please make sure our packets not just come through email, but there is a space on the website for our committee where our materials should be there? That's part of state requirements for these meetings. And this packet was not there. It's just easier also for me to find it in the thousands of emails I get every day.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. We'll get this one up there. Right. Thank you very much, everybody. And Bobby just put in the chat, we, the entire committee was in full support of the Cross Street program. The question was not about the program of its ability, it was about internal reporting. So we will talk, we'll, we'll make sure we get those questions, you know, the, you know, that we'll, we'll get the fine points on what specifically needs to be asked and answered, Reverend Anderson, and then we're looking for that conversation.
Okay, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your time and for your effort. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing further.
So moved.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are in adjournment at 12:12 and we'll see everybody soon, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, take care, have a good day.